Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session Agenda. Item number one is called "Call to Order." Council meetings can be watched in real time via Cox-Campbell Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Members of the public may also attend the meeting virtually through Microsoft Teams. Item number two, announcements from the mayor and/or city manager. I've got a couple of announcements this evening. The first item, I'm going to come down to the front for this one, but it is for Arab-American Heritage Month. And if any members who are going to join me in the front would come down here. And so, this proclamation reads, "Whereas for over a century, Arab-Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, and culture. And whereas since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants. And whereas they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed that have added great strength to our great democracy. And whereas Arab-Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas the celebration of Arab-American ancestry and cultural heritage educates our fellow Americans and counters misconceptions, harmful stereotyping, and shared misconceptions by other ethnic groups. And whereas they join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. And whereas the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab-Americans have helped us build a better nation. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare April 2025 as National Arab-American Heritage Month in Tempe, Arizona."
All right, if we're going to have you guys say about...
Other head come this way.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Last one here. One, two, and three. Great.
I just wanted to introduce the people that are here, not with the names, but with the country, because we represent a variety... We represent a variety of Arabic countries and Middle East. We start with Iraq. Iraq.
Afghanistan.
Syria.
Syria.
Palestine.
Palestine.
Jordan.
Jordan.
Palestine.
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 Lebanon.
Lebanon.
Palestine.
Palestine.
United States.
United States.
And India. And we have Morocco just joining us. Please come on down.
She's from Morocco.
Hello.
Hello, hello. Come on in.
We really appreciate you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
You've always been good friends to our community.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have Corey Woods.
I'm good. He just did.
Grab one more picture with him. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Last one here. One, two, and three. Great.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good to see you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda here is item two. It's the East Valley Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. There's still time to get tickets to the East Valley Mayor's Prayer Breakfast on April 30th at 7:00 a.m. at the Mountain America Stadium. Ticket sales will close this coming Sunday, so we'd be honored to have you join us and celebrate the spirit of unity with the city of Tempe. So please visit evmpb.org to buy tickets and find out more details. Next up, Madam City Manager, any announcements this evening?
No announcements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Once again, I just want to state too that guidelines for conduct at city council meetings are on the table near the entrance for those in attendance at tonight's meeting. We're now going to play a video with the proper protocol for ensuring the appropriate conduct at city council meetings.
The city of Tempe welcomes public comment at this time. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. Continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. We need to be able to hear everyone in the room. Behavior that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any city council meeting is not helpful and is not permitted. This includes behavior both inside and outside of the council chambers. Should individuals inside the council chambers become disruptive so that city business is not able to be conducted, the mayor will first ask that the individuals allow city business to be completed. There will be time for public comment during the call to the audience portion of the meeting. If no cooperation, the mayor will issue a verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is still no cooperation, the mayor will issue a second verbal warning and let them know that the continued disruptive behavior will lead to removal from the council chambers. If there is no cooperation after asking and two verbal warnings, then the mayor will ask security officers to remove only those individuals who are causing the disruption. Security personnel should not engage in any way, but only escort them from the council chambers. If individuals refuse to leave, security personnel shall warn them that they are trespassing and that the next step will be arrest by a Tempe police officer. Tempe officers may have to arrest if individuals refuse to leave. Charges for trespass and disorderly conduct may apply, as well as other charges. Should anyone be asked to be removed, the mayor will recess the meeting.
Thank you very much. Next up, item number three, "Call to the Audience." The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the issue review session and committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The card I have here is from Kim Gaffney Loza. Please come forward, state your name and city of residence. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Kim Gaffney Loza, Tempe, Arizona. This is related to the reserve management plan in a way, and it's mostly about staffing. As you have read, I'm sure I'm totally in favor of the management plan. But one thing I think we need to think about, and I know this is a really tough budget year, so maybe this is something we need to think of going forward. Our Rangers are such a big asset as far, not only in helping with our unsheltered populations. They've worked on trails as well as picking up trash, but also in educating. And since we don't have signs up yet, and we probably won't for a while, educating the public about what the regulations are in a preserve is tantamount. Some people don't even know it's a preserve. They argue with me when I tell them it's a preserve. So I think they're really important. And then the other thing is, especially when you look at all the suggestions in the management plan, there's a lot that needs to be done. So right now, we only have two permanent employees, and you know, Gabe Satorre also does all the volunteer coordination. I don't think that's enough, even with volunteer help, to address a lot of the issues in the management plan that we need going forward. Don't expect it to happen immediately. Obviously, I just wanted to make awareness of those two issues. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That's the only speaker card I have this evening. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing that, I'll close. Item number three, just also as a note too for those in attendance or those watching at home, Councilmember Keating is also participating virtually this afternoon. That brings me to item number four, A, Fiscal Year 2025/26 Budget Review, and that would be Lisette Camacho and Julie Hyder.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This presentation is our last budget review session before we go into the tentative budget process. No funding decisions are being made tonight, and department directors are here to answer any specific questions on the operating and capital budgets. Overall, the operating and capital budgets total $1.7 billion. That's an increase of 7.4% over last year. As you know, in our last February long-range forecast, we recommended budget balancing strategies due to the loss of the collection of residential rental sales tax. So for comparison, the fiscal year 2025 budget saw an increase of 18% over the prior year, and this is a 7.4% increase. And that's reflective of the budget balancing strategies and also the, you know, the more conservative expenditures that we're moving forward in this budget process. In this presentation, we're also going to provide details on the operating and capital budgets, and then we'll provide an update on the local sales tax revenues where we are through March. And as a reminder, as we head into the tentative budget process, the tentative budget that council adopts will set the maximum level of expenditures for the city for the next fiscal year. We are recommending for the tentative budget adopting the requested budget by departments. We're not recommending any reductions. What we're going to propose is that we monitor the budget through the end of the fiscal year and also through the beginning of fiscal year 2026. We do have a long-range forecast scheduled for November, so at that time, we'll have pretty good data on where we are with local tax revenues and can have discussions about where we are. Before I turn over the presentation to Ms. Hyder to my right, I'd like to thank the departments for being flexible and also for being responsive to questions and also submitting their budgets on time. Also, wanted to thank our budget staff, Lori Isakowski, Scott Gruber, Carrie Taylor, and Vinicia Benson. And with that, I'll turn over the presentation to Ms. Hyder.
As we continue through the budget process, we are aligned with council's strategic priority, strong community connections, and the performance measure transparency in government. We've had a series of public meetings since February, and we're now at April 24th for the budget review session, as Lisette mentioned, which pulls together the recommended operating and capital budgets. After tonight's presentation, there is a placeholder, if needed, for an additional budget review session on May 8th. And then the remainder of the calendar includes the formal approvals by mayor and council of the tentative and final budgets and property tax levy in May, June, and July. And I will turn it back to Lisette.
So over the next few slides, we'll talk about the operating budget. And as you can see here, the operating budget for fiscal year 2026 is about $875 million. That's an increase of 7.4% over last year. The increase is due to planned increases to the budget that we had included in the long-range forecast. So that includes the compensation study provisions for those, implementation of the classification study as well. And we also had pre-approved supplementals for the fire medical rescue department, and those are the firefighters that we're adding. Three firefighters for the next four years to staff Fire Station 8. We have a contractual agreement with ASU to have the staffing and the construction of the fire station to be completed in 2031. We also had inflationary adjustments included into the budget for fuel, electricity, and any contractual obligations that we have. So as far as the operating budget summary by fund, you can see here the adopted budget for each of the major funds for fiscal year 2025 and also the recommended budget for fiscal year 2026. The very last column is the dollar change. All the numbers that you're seeing on this slide are in millions. So as you can see, the recommended budget for the general fund is $344 million. That's an increase of about $20 million over last year. Water and wastewater at $120 million for an increase of $12 million. And solid waste is at $32 million for an increase of about $2 million. And then the transit fund at $87 million for an increase of about $4 million. No change in the transportation budget, remains at $19 million. And for the arts and culture and the ambulance fund, very minimal increases to both of the The supplementals that you're seeing on this slide for the general fund, for the most part, they were pre-approved supplementals. I mentioned the three firefighters in the fire medical rescue department. But as you can see, the approved supplementals in the general fund totaled $2.2 million. They did have an offset. So the offsets are revenue reductions within the departments or any additional... I'm sorry, expenditure reductions in the departments and any additional revenues that they're receiving for that fiscal year. So the net fiscal impact for the CIP, operating impacts and operating budget supplementals for the general fund, is $1.2 million. We did add five regular FTEs. Again, that includes the three firefighters, and we also added two parts maintenance technician in community services. The cost for the parts maintenance technician had an equal expenditure offset, so they reduced their budget by the same amount, so you had a net impact of zero. The water and wastewater fund, not affected by the loss of residential rental, so they were allowed to have supplemental requests totaling $1.8 million. Again, no offsets because the water and wastewater fund is an enterprise fund. On this slide, you've seen this before. This is what we presented in February 2025. And just as a reminder, the chart on the left are your revenues and expenditures. The red line is the expenditure and the blue line is your revenues. To the right, the chart that you're seeing is a chart of our fund balance. As a reminder, our fund balance policy is between 20% to 30% of operating revenue. And also, you've seen that in the middle of this slide, you can see the estimated surplus and deficit. And as you can see, we have planned drawdowns of fund balance beginning in fiscal year 2026 that carries through fiscal year 2029. Again, it's a planned drawdown of fund balance, and that is the result of the loss of residential rental sales tax. We've had budget balancing measures, which I'll cover again in the next slides, but through the end of the five-year forecast, our fund balance is meeting our policy and ranges from 32% through 23% in fiscal year 2029. So a little bit about sales tax. We've mentioned before that our sales tax revenues are not meeting our projected revenues for the fiscal year. So the red line that you're seeing is the budget, and the green bar lines that you're seeing is for the prior fiscal year. The blue lines are going to be the current fiscal year. It is information through March for one year, beginning in April of 2024 through March of 2025. As you can see, we're seeing revenues to start to be flattening out for March about the same as last fiscal year. And also for February and March, that's when we see the loss of residential rental. So it's very positive for me that revenues in March is about the same as the prior year. But I also want to caution mayor and council that, you know, at the national level, there was a lot of talks about tariffs, and what we've seen is that there were some, you know, a lot of purchasing happening to get ahead of the tariffs that happened in March and probably continued on into April. So we're going to monitor the revenues for April and also for May to see if there's going to be a decline or if it continues on this, you know, more positive trend. And this next slide is just a reminder that the residential rental tax elimination became effective last January, and this is the cost, the revenue loss for fiscal year '25 is $10 million across all funds, $6.6 million in the general fund, and then it ranges at an average of about $22 million throughout the rest of the forecast period. General fund highlights, we talked about the lower sales tax revenue, and we did implement budget balancing measures to ensure that the general fund remained stable. So we had limited supplemental funding. So for fiscal year 2026, either they had an expenditure offset or a revenue offset with a net impact of zero. And we also recommended limited cash funding of capital projects. Moving on to future years, we're recommending to suspend cash funding of capital projects that are not currently in the adopted capital improvement program. We also recommended drawing down the Public Safety Personnel Retirement Reserves Fund, $1 million on an annual basis beginning in fiscal year 2026 to fund pension contributions for public safety personnel. Also recommended that we utilize the other post-employment benefit reserves, about $500,000 on an annual basis beginning in fiscal year 2026 to fund post-employment health benefits for our employees. As I mentioned earlier, the recommended budget for fiscal year 2026 includes the provisions of the classification and compensation study. Wanted to spend a little bit of time in here and just wanted to let all of you know that the last time the city had a full classification and compensation study was 37 years ago in 1988. Also, the performance measure 5.07, employee turnover, was accelerated in fiscal year 2024 and 2025 by mayor and council. So this classification and compensation study addresses that. The recommendation of the study is to target the 75th percentile of the midpoint of the market cities, and that would make the city of Tempe a leader in the market. Also, of course, we want to make sure that there is competitive pay strategies across all levels of the city. So we hired a consultant, Siegel. They're also recommending that we align the mayor and council compensation with the staff recommendations in this classification and compensation study, targeting the market at the 75th percentile of base pay. So with that, I'll turn over the presentation to Julie to go over the capital budget.
The capital improvement program is planned over a five-year time period, and the total for the five years is $1.9 billion, which is consistent with the current five-year program. Only the first year will be adopted into the budget, and shown here is the comparison of the recommended fiscal year 2026 budget of $832.6 million compared to the fiscal year 2025 budget of $775 million. This represents a 7.4% increase primarily in the reappropriations area. And for comparison, the increase from last year to this year was slightly over 24%, and that was largely attributed to the added projects that were ultimately approved in the November 2024 bond election. This chart breaks down the recommended capital budget by program area and shows the change from the current fiscal year budget to the recommended. Most program areas are consistent with the current budget. I would like to highlight a few. The water wastewater fund has an increase of 23% or $53.7 million. This is largely in the reappropriations as well as the project to reactivate the reclamation facility to collect and treat reclaimed water locally. The transit program has an increase of 37%, and these are attributed to the federally-funded project, the Kyrene Roosevelt Farmer Bike and Pedestrian Project, as well as increases to the pathway capital maintenance CIP. This is the project that ensures that the 40-plus miles of pathways that the Transit Division is responsible for stays in good repair. And finally, the general purpose category had a decrease of $25.5 million, and this decrease is primarily due to the Diablo Stadium Improvement Project. This is the project in partnership with the Angels baseball team. The project is already underway, and the majority of the funding was appropriated in the current fiscal year. As a brief recap of the city's property tax stabilization policy, it was recently revised and approved by city council on April 10th. The revised policy allows the property tax levy to increase by up to 5% over the prior year, and this will ensure that we have a stable and sufficient funding source to fund the voter-authorized capital program. Each year, a council will approve the actual increase in two public hearings. And finally, this slide is a snapshot of projects that have funding in year one of the five-year CIP. Some are ongoing, such as sustainability and conservation projects and the cybersecurity program. Others will build specific projects such as the fire medical rescue station in the Novus Corridor, as well as the new police substation. This is just a representative sample of the full capital program. And with that, mayor and council, that does conclude our presentation, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Greatly appreciate it. I know Councilmember Adams had a question.
Yeah, just actually a couple comments. You know how I love the budget. So I just think you guys did a great job with this budget under difficult circumstances, given our reduction in the rental taxes. Also, I'm happy to see that we have three more firefighters coming on. Our city continues to grow, and public safety is very important to me, and I'm just happy that we're going to increase the firefighters. Also, good work with the fund balance. A lot of times, we've had in the past huge fund balances, and I didn't think it was right to have that big a fund balance, so that you guys have compressed that, and that's really going in, I think, a best practices format. So thank you for doing that. I'm happy about Diablo Stadium being improved. That's been a long time coming, so good job there. And I just can't remember my last writing, so I'm sure it was good. But anyway, great job under difficult circumstances. This is some of the toughest budget we've had for many, many years, and you two did a fabulous job. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Amber, then Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with what Councilmember Adams said. You guys did a fantastic job. I mean, these numbers and budgets are not, you know, for everybody, and you guys put it in English, so that's always helpful. Just I do have some concerns. Reading through some of the background information, I know for the rest of this fiscal year, we've adopted a kind of a 10% across-the-board department cut to kind of that reflects the actual revenues that we're bringing in. But in the budget that we're going to be adopting next year, you guys are recommending that we actually take that away and we start back where we were before the budget reductions. I don't know that I'm comfortable with that, everything coming out of DC right now. I don't feel like... I'm just not comfortable with that. I'm also not comfortable with doing across-the-board, you know, pay reductions, especially if it ends up getting a little bit like 5%, 10%. You know, you can fudge some numbers around here or there to get away with that, but once you start getting into actual budget cuts, you know, at that point, I would much prefer to start looking at the programming because, you know, we, you know, Ms. Gaffney Loza came up here, you know, and talked about the park rangers. We do have some, to me, programs and departments that are by charter, we're supposed to be providing to the citizens, and some of the other things that we're doing aren't necessarily charter-driven. And I also am a little concerned that we're not coming back until November to look at the new revenue numbers, because at that point, we're like, what, five months into the new fiscal year? And the longer you wait to go in and adjust budgets, the more pain you're going to actually feel. I kind of feel like you can spread it a little bit more if you know as a department that you're going to have this amount of money. You can make those decisions throughout the year, but if you don't come back until November, you've already spent money in five months that you can't get back. So you're going to have to make bigger cuts. You know, we're going to have to chop off a limb at that point in order to balance the budget. So those were the concerns that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hodge?
Okay, thank you. I echo what my council member said, that you did a phenomenal job on making the budget.
Okay, thank you. I echo what my council member said, that you did a phenomenal job on making the budget with the climate we have today. My, my question was, I guess, more about what we just heard from, you know, with park ranger. Cause I know this is not just the first time I've heard that. Is there any, um, wiggle room or, I, I just want to know what we're going to think about. Cause that's one of the major things we've been talking about is park, people have been talking about, we love it, but we, we need more. So I was just, I guess my question is, is there any, um, more?
Mayor, members of the council, um, also to address Ms. Amber, Councilmember Amber's, um, comments. We are in constant communication with our department directors. So almost at every, um, director's meeting, we meet about the budget and provide an update. So even though we're recommending that we adopt the budget as requested, the reason for that is it does set the maximum limit for the city. Um, that gives us more flexibility. And what we've told the departments and discussed with them on an, uh, it's, we meet every two weeks. So we have an update on the sales tax. We've talked about recommending to adopt the budget as requested, but also for them to be conservative if there's, um, hirings that are non-critical to continue to pause those, but leaving it up to them and giving them flexibility. So I believe that our departments right now have, um, are very aware of the situation that we're in. Um, they've been very flexible with us, collaborative. And, um, I trust that, you know, when we go back to them and provide updates, if we needed to, our recommendation is, um, have those discussions. Actually, we, we communicated to them that we'll have discussions in May, maybe June to see where we're going to be beginning July 1st. It wouldn't be in November. We'll have internal discussions with our team to see where we could have, you know, where we'll be with, with this new, new budget and also if the revenues have improved. It's really about monitoring revenues, um, because we don't want to overreact at this point. I want to make sure that the trends that we're seeing are, you know, valid and that they are continuing on. As far as the park ranger, we're, we're also told, telling departments to hold the line. Our recommendation is not to add new positions because those are ongoing costs. And that puts, that's going to put a lot of strain on the general fund. So we've, we've talked to departments about, um, coming up with innovative ideas and how we can get there where it can still be budget neutral. So our recommendation right now is to continue with the budget neutral, um, request. We can analyze that, um, you know, Julie and I can assist the departments. But at the same time, being mindful of where we might be two, three months, maybe, you know, six months from now, just to have that conservatism, conservatism in there. Setting the budget at the maximum level will give us the flexibility. If for some reason, you know, changes, sales tax changes drastically and we're now back up to where we were before, then we have the flexibility and the budget available for expenditures.
Councilmember Amber?
Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate that and I absolutely, in every part of my body, hope that what you just said comes to pass where, you know, the revenues go back. But again, my concern is, and I appreciate that you guys are going to have those talks, you know, continuing throughout the fiscal year with the department heads. I'm not a fan, I'm just not a fan of the across-the-board, you know, cuts to the departments because I think that there is a hierarchy and there is an importance factor in terms of what each of the departments do and what they're doing for the community. And if you're doing that and you're only having those conversations with the department heads and not with the city council, then you're basically doing across-the-board cuts, um, at that point. And when you come back to the council five months into the fiscal year, then at that point, we're going to have to be making decisions that are way worse than it would have been had we been talking about it three months in advance.
Vice Mayor Garble, then Councilmember Adams?
So, um, one of the concerns I have, and you'd mentioned at the very beginning about the uncertainty at the national level. And then, um, what report that you'd given me is like, there's 79 grants that we have. It's like $38 million. If the, we do not get the funding for those grants, what does that do for those programs? Do we just stop them or do we have backup that if the grant money doesn't come in, that we're going to continue to do these programs or do we, these programs stop?
Um, as the, the biggest risk on the programs will be the CDBG and also the housing programs. On the other, um, city departments, primarily it's capital projects. So for the capital, um, projects that are funded by grants, you would have to pause them because those fundings aren't coming in. On the, um, community health and human services grants, my, um, um, the recent update that I have is that those grants are still in place and it's business as usual for them. Um, Tim Birch can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that for his programs, the grant funding hasn't been affected because they're direct, um, payments to, to, um, to, to, to those who need those services.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that, just one other question. Would you be able to tell me what the update or the latest information you have on the tax exempt bond status? Is that, is that, that one scares me to death?
Mayor, members of the council, the tax exempt bond status is still, um, no decision has been made on that. Um, we're still watching that. We have consultants also watching that because it does affect, um, the city. And also we're in touch with the Government Finance Officers Association at the national level and monitoring this as well.
So no changes. Okay. That's what I need. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Uh, yes. Thank you for answering their questions. And I know, uh, from being in your seats, uh, that we look at the budget all the time as, as, um, directors and, and managers. So I, I really think that we have the best team that the city has ever had, um, in, in the department directors, city management and, um, leadership in general. So I know that, uh, we look at those budgets constantly and, and, uh, and make sure that we're, we're staying in line with it. So I, it's, it's matter, for me, it's a matter of trust. And I, I totally trust, um, this leadership team to do what's right. And I, and I also know that if, if things start going in a bad direction or a worse direction, I should say, um, that you will come to us before November and we can make adjustments if needed. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Yep. Councilman Hodge?
I just have one more question. I know we were talking about federal, but there's a lot of cuts coming to the state too, in the budget. So how is that going to incline when it comes to us also? Cause I've been, I've been following some of the really bad bills and there are a lot of them. I'm just concerned on that too, because I know we look at federal, but state is not doing justice by us and the cities too. And I know the League of Cities is working on that, but is there something that we can do, um, to help? Or, you know, I'm just, as I say, I keep a very strong eye on it, um, on the bills that's happening. And some of them are not looking well for cities.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, I think being connected with our state legislators and also the representatives about those bills and how it impacts Tempe is important. I know that, um, Jonathan Sheffield has been working with, um, the league on that and also within our representatives. As far as direct funding from the state, we have very, very minimal direct funding from them, especially for our operating funds. We don't relate, rely on, um, state funding. Um, reason for that is we have our own sales tax and that's the largest source of our revenue. Um, I did forget to provide an update on the food tax, um, you know,
I'm talking about.
The city of Tempe is held harmless for that. The, the most recent amendment to that is, um, allows, um, for food tax to be set at 2%. Um, and those smaller cities who had higher tax rate, they were also grandfathered in. So just so you know, the city of Tempe's tax rate is 1.8%. And with this legislation, um, any increases would require voter approval. Our, our charter already requires any increases about, above 1% tax rate, um, to be put out to the voters for approval. So again, it's almost neutral to Tempe because we're already required by, um, by, by charter to go to the voters for an increase.
Quick question on my end too, um, just to something that Councilmember Amber raised. I know when you talked about coming back to council in November and I know she expressed some concern about kind of waiting till November for us to hear kind of a more full update. Would there be any possibility that you could come back by the end of September to kind of give a full update to the council? So we, we at least, we know, we know you're meeting every couple of weeks, but at least so we're all kind of up here, read in on exactly what's going on when it comes to the revenue numbers?
Mayor, members of the council, of course, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Appreciate it. That brings me to item 4B Hayden Butte and Papago Preserve's management plan. Let's see. All right, Alex. Wow, two Alexes this evening. I love it.
A squared. Mayor, vice mayor, council members, um, Alex Jovanovic, Community Services, uh, Deputy Community Services Director for Park Services. Joining me today for the Hayden Butte and Papago Preserve's Management Plan Presentation is Alex Cortez, Community Services Manager for Parks Maintenance. Uh, the management plan, as Kim Gaffney Loza mentioned earlier, has a lot of information in it. So today's presentation is intended to provide you with an overview of, uh, the plan, its objectives and some key recommendations that will ensure the long-term preservation and sustainable use of the preserves. This initiative directly supports City Council's strategic priority, quality of life, specifically performance measure 3.16, which is, um, focuses on the achieving high satisfaction with community services managed places and spaces. Today's presentation is centered around this performance measure as well as the land acknowledgement statement as we have a responsibility to steward these lands. We ask that you keep this strategic priority, the quality of life, performance measure 3.16, as well as the land acknowledgement in mind throughout the presentation. Our agenda today will cover background information and objectives of the plan, community engagement process undertaken, some of the existing conditions within the preserves, a few of the key recommendations and proposed success criteria and implementation timeline. And finally, we'll open the floor for any questions and we'll do our best to try to answer your questions. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Alex, who will provide you some background information.
So this management plan was developed through a collaborative effort from our consulting team. Sorry, consulting team, Logan Simpson, whose expertise in various areas played a, uh, played an invaluable role in shaping the plan. Uh, while they're not presenting today, there are a couple of the team members, uh, present to answer any specific questions that may come up. We would also like to highlight, uh, City of Tempe's Historic Preservation Officer, Dr. Zach Lechner for his involvement in the plan. Hayden Butte, Hayden Butte and Papago Preserves are valuable natural cultural resources that the city recognizes the need for sustainable use and long-term preservation. We contracted Logan Simpson back in the fall of 2023 to create this management plan. The plan outlines structured approach to preserve the environmental integrity, historical significance and recreational value. This plan aims to balance conservation, recreation and cultural preservation to ensure sustainability of these spaces for future generations. The plan will also serve as an administrative document for staff, to guide staff on, uh, maintenance, activation and improvements. A quick background on Hayden Butte and Papago, they were designated preserves through resolution and ultimately for Papago, uh, proposition that went to voters in 2018. Um, the resolution language highlights the protection of these spaces while, uh, maintaining access for use. The development of the plan involved a lengthy timeline of engagement, uh, start, starting with the kickoff in 2023, culminating today with this work-study presentation. While the timeline in front of you doesn't include every step, it, it include, it shows a few of the stops along the way. The process included multiple commission meetings, four public workshops, site visits, tribal consultations and preserve, preserve user group meetings, ensuring that a wide range of perspectives were considered. Most recently, meeting with MIAC, who provided a lot of good questions and comments that will be, that will play, uh, that will insist with the implementation of the plan. The overarching goal of the management plan is to ensure the preserves are self-sustaining, natural open spaces compatible with recreation and other necessary or appropriate uses, while honoring the site's natural resources, cultural heritage and intrinsic value. To achieve this goal, we've established 14 key objectives. Each objective is tied to a success criterion metric and metrics so we can measure our, uh, progress and impact. Alex will touch more on the success criteria later in the presentation. Um, though I won't go through all of these right now, I just wanted to highlight a few. Fostering continuous input from the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community and the four southern tribes on maintenance and management practices, developing a recreational trails assessment and formal trails plan, restoration of landscapes, habitats and, and eradicating invasive species, and also continuously identifying and assessing partnership opportunities. And this time we'll pass it back to Alex for the remainder of the presentation. Thank you.
Stuck with me for the rest of the time. So throughout the development of the, the management plan, uh, we had multiple opportunities or provided multiple opportunities for community engagement, including several, uh, consultations with tribal historic preservation offices, as mentioned earlier, that were coordinated by Dr. Lechner, our Historic Preservation Officer. Um, those included site visits with representatives from Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community, as well as Gila River Indian Community that were representing the four southern tribes. Logan Simpson also provided multiple presentations to our Desert Conservation Commission and our Historic Preservation Commission. And most recently, I was afforded the opportunity to provide a presentation on the management plan to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, um, which was really exciting. And they had lots of great questions and comments, which I'll touch on one of those in a little while. In addition to that, working with our, um, Neighborhood Services Team, as well as Communications and Marketing Department, uh, conducted four workshops, which Alex mentioned earlier, uh, eight individual meetings, eight total meetings for those four workshops. So four of them virtual, four of them in person resulted in approximately 200 participants. And then tied to those, we also issued four survey opportunities, public outreach survey opportunities, collected approximately 600 survey responses. Between all that input and feedback coming back from the community, it largely centered around trail maintenance, erosion, signage and invasive species management. Uh, it is important to note though, that there was a lot of support for maintaining existing recreational elements, whether the city has installed them or not. Um, that was also supported through some of the recreation user groups that came to meet with Desert Conservation Commission members, uh, at a few of the meetings, such as with climbers, mountain bikers and disc golf, uh, the disc golf community that also supported maintaining those recreational amenities. Logan Simpson took inventory of all the existing conditions throughout the preserves, including some of the recreational amenities. Specifically, they conducted a class three survey of Papago Preserve, uh, which is a cultural resources inventory, basically inventories, uh, all the archaeological, potential archaeological sites and historic areas. In addition to that, they conducted what's called a traditional cultural place study. Um, that specifically identifies and evaluates places of cultural, spiritual or natural significance to a living community that are rooted in their history and very important for the maintaining their cultural identity. The preserves have significant environmental and cultural, uh, features. They support plant species and, uh, provide critical desert ecosystem functions. Hayden Butte specifically is historically important to the Orem and Peepas people and is recognized as a traditional cultural place. Additionally, uh, historical ruins exist within Papago Preserve. In addition to the existing conditions, Logan Simpson also documented several or identified several challenges such as erosion, trail issues, invasive species, such as our favorite invasive species topic, which is stink net. Uh, there's also issues with vandalism due to unauthorized activities, such as shown in the picture on the top right-hand side. Uh, vandalism does occur on some installed elements, such as on that wall in that picture, as well as on cultural and natural resources, which poses a whole different, uh, challenge to remove and process to do that. There's also a need for improved signage as well as clear access points to the preserve. As mentioned, the management plan is intended to ensure the preserves are able to be used for generations to come. We're going to do that through a balance of conservation as well as appropriate recreational use. The following several slides approximately, um, contain recommendations that are a snapshot of the over 45 recommendations that are in the plan. Um, and those recommendations are focused on that very balance, balance between conservation and recreational use. Some of the recommendations, as noted on this slide, are focused on maintenance, such as controlling erosion through the installation of barriers, designing trails to protect the natural landscape, routing trails away from sensitive areas, restoring native vegetation that will also have an impact on wildlife and habitat restoration. Some recommendations are more administrative in nature, such as a key recommendation, which is forming an, uh, potentially forming a memorandum of understanding or MOU with Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community. That MOU potentially will guide cultural sensitive, culturally sensitive management decisions and ensure the perspectives of the tribal community are integrated, um, into the ongoing stewardship of the preserves. It'll also potentially establish or enhance our, uh, communication protocols with the tribal community. Additionally noted on this slide, there are also recommendations to monitor and protect petroglyphs as well as develop education programs. Some recommendations will need further community engagement, ongoing engagement over the time of the implementation, mostly because they have direct impacts on recreation user groups. Some are noted on this slide. We do have some areas within the preserves that have been developed by community members over time that weren't installed by the cities. That's just some bike jump areas. So there is a recommendation to consider or identify alternative locations for that, working with the community and further communication with them, with stakeholders. And then ultimately relocating and then consider restoring that area to natural habitat. There's also a recommendation to prohibit the use of climbing bolts on some of the buttes in the preserves and prohibit climbing. There are two recommendations on this slide that are specific to Hayden Butte Preserve. One is to repair erosion around the A and make some additional enhancements. One is to repair erosion around the A and make some additional enhancements to the A, as well as prohibit the installation of holiday displays on Hayden Butte, and consider alternative locations for those displays. Other recommendations for recreational use are centered around access, trails, and signage. Improved signage will help control, or control is not the right word, improved signage will help direct or guide visitors throughout the preserve, encourage responsible use through rules, rural postings, and then provide educational information as well. It's also proposed, as I mentioned earlier, to have enhanced access points within the preserves that'll help control visitor flow and help control some of the issues that we're seeing with trails and spider trail creation.
Quickly, can I check out, not the, not the previous, but the slide before that I get, so that one, yes, is one of the, make sure I took a look at that one. Okay, sounds good. Yes, did you?
Oh.
Councilwoman Brach.
Okay.
I guess I can ask my question. My question is, is kind of, I don't know how it fits in, but I've been, we've been getting a lot of, has there been some kind of like destruction to the land area where the residents, because we're getting a lot of more coyotes and foxes running in neighborhoods out of the preserve area. So I'm just wondering if something happened recently, because it's been a, I've been going to like my neighborhood meetings, and they're like, I see foxes running across, especially in North Tempe where I'm at, it's a lot more foxes and coyotes running around than they have been in the past. So I'm just, that's the question, I guess I want to know, is that something?
I'll try my best, but I'll probably have to get back to you on this. So I live in central Tempe, and I have a fox in my neighborhood.
Yes.
So which is a little bit, little bit away from the preserve, but my, our assumption, part of the assumption is that as habitat has changed within the preserves, due to vegetation changes and those types of things, it's between that and searching for food, potentially they have gone further out away from that desert environment. Now granted, we're surrounded by desert, but that's part of the assumption.
Yeah, because I guess me and the mayor was standing right here a couple of weeks ago, and you, the two of us, the three of us, and we saw a couple of them ran right across, right down there.
Yeah, there's a fox population.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, Councilmember Adams?
The foxes need a place to live too, Perdeta.
I know, but I don't want to eat my puppies.
Anyway, Kim Gaffney Loza brought this to my attention three years ago, and so I'm really, really happy to see how this has progressed. You guys have done a great job with, helping with the preserve, and I appreciate it. And Kim Gaffney Loza is also out there, I think, every day, keeping an eye on it, and I think we should get her, give her an honorary badge or something, because she does such a great job letting us know what's going on. The reason I wanted to just see this slide again is, these are jumps, the top right, and what are we doing about those jumps with the bike population?
So the recommendation right now in the management plan is for the city to work with the stakeholders, so the biking community and anyone else that's using the preserves for recreational uses, to try to identify an alternative location somewhere outside of sensitive areas. So ideally, it'd be somewhere outside of the preserve, or preserves in general, and then construct something that's suitable, something that's similar. We do view that as an important recreational amenity. Obviously, the city hasn't installed it, it's just developed over the last 20, 30, 40 years, where people have moved earth out there. Now, when a lot of that work occurred originally, it wasn't designated preserve, so it probably wasn't any type of rule violation. Now, unfortunately, because that has been designated preserve since 2018, or I guess going back to 2017 technically through resolution, there are some strict rules about digging and moving earth out there, so it technically is prohibited. In addition to that, there's some concerns with the size of jumps and how we can monitor and manage that space, but ultimately, the recommendation is to try to find an alternative location and have something similar somewhere else within the city as a recreational amenity.
Okay, I'm glad you clarified that for the public, because that is important, and we don't want it torn up any more than it already has been. And so I'm glad we're making some changes in that area, and then also giving the bicyclists another opportunity to jump where they want and where it's safe for everyone. Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks.
Sounds good. Yes, Councilwoman Brach?
With that, with, when we do, you know, when that is all considered, how will we get that out to the community so they understand? Because they've been doing it for a while, so it is going to take a little bit. And most people, you put a little signage up, that ain't going to stop somebody from doing it. So how do we see it going out to make sure that the community understands that this will be no longer in this area and that you have that area over here? So I'm just curious, because I just think that if we don't have the right information being put out, they're going to still continue to do it, you know? And we don't have the park rangers enough to cover that area, that we keep pulling people away. So how do we keep bringing that information to the public?
So it'll be a multi-pronged approach, you know, but we will rely on the experts. I am not the expert in the communication field in spreading that information, but we'll rely on our Neighborhood Services Team, Communications and Marketing Department, as well as just good old-fashioned one-on-one discussions and sharing information. Our park rangers, I will note, they have been out there, and things have improved as far as the amount of work that's been going on. So now that the park rangers have been brought back, mayor through support, mayor and council and city leadership, they've been able to go out there and enforce the rules that exist and let people know that, hey, you can't develop additional jumps, haven't taken any away, but just letting folks know that they can't continue to build them or move earth out there. But as far as long-term communications and any changes out there, as we communicate with stakeholders, we'll engage them in multiple different ways, whether that's through social media postings, community meetings, forums, those types of things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Perfect. Keep going forward, I guess, thank you.
Let's see, where was I? Okay, public engagement and education are vital for fostering understanding and respect for the preserves. Developing educational programs, enhanced signage, and utilizing technology are some of the key strategies or recommendations. We plan to create a volunteer steward program that will encourage community involvement. It'll also help with maintenance and then supplement existing city resources. There were talks about budget earlier, right? So we can have volunteers out there, they're very passionate about the area, they can help supplement existing city resources, and then that'll help us also ensure a long-term public support for the conservation efforts out there. I will note, I mentioned MIAC earlier, that while we would like to incorporate technology, and a lot of people have expressed the desire to have technology, QR codes, and those types of things on signage out there, it was very interesting, meeting with Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, they had mentioned that when they go out specifically to an area like this, open space, they at times, they want to disconnect from communication altogether. They don't want to be connected to the technology, so they advised us to have as much traditional signage as possible, not saying technology is bad, not saying we shouldn't have QR codes, but they just encouraged us to have traditional technologies or traditional signage as well. So I thought that was very, very interesting. Implementation of the management plan is going to be phased, so measuring our success will also be, occur over time. As Alex mentioned earlier, each of the plan objectives, each of the 14 plan objectives has metrics, measuring devices and metrics attached to them. Some of them, such as development of a trails assessment or trails plan, is very binary in the sense that we either completed or we don't within the two years it's identified. Other indicators and metrics are going to happen over time, we will track them over time, such as the biodiversity indicators as we enhance vegetation out there and change wildlife habitat, that will take a lot of time. And then additionally, we'd like to also measure some other more subjective measures, some satisfaction. As you know, we have an annual community survey, we'd like to gauge some of that satisfaction in between the annual survey, so we don't have to wait year over year for that information, on a feeling of safety out there, as well as satisfaction with our work and improvements. Short-term actions over the next three years will focus on initial restoration, trail assess, developing a trail assessment, and then the MOU that I mentioned earlier with Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community, and also install additional or new signage out there. The medium term, kind of the next four to six years, will expand on the trail improvements and then develop formal education programs. And then long-term, we're really focused on the comprehensive assessment, and then also continued sustainability initiatives, really focusing on adaptive management principles as the environmental conditions and recreational uses change out there, we're going to want to have the ability to update our practices as, as conditions change. So what's next? Of the 14 plan objectives, 10 of those objectives right now in the plan are listed as high priority. So in addition to us going out to the Desert Conservation Commission and seeking support of this management plan, we also want to meet with the Desert Conservation Commission and have them help us reprioritize, so to speak, those 10 highest priority initiatives or objectives, knowing that we can't tackle all 10 of those right away. A few of the next steps are already in progress, such as developing the park steward program, so we're hopefully going to pilot a park steward program later this spring, early summer. Some of the next steps after that will be continuing the community engagement, as noted earlier, as well as continuing our adaptive management principles and practices as things change out there. And then lastly, noted on this slide, just continuing that community engagement, specifically for any of those recreational uses that are going to impact a lot of folks. So the management plan represents a comprehensive and collaborative approach to developing this, well, I shouldn't say develop, preserving the space and then using the space. We see the implementation of the plan as the path forward to reach the goals and objectives, and be able to ensure the long-term sustainable use of the preserves. So with that, I thank you for your attention and time today, and we will try our best to answer any questions, or some folks are here from the Logan Simpson team too, if it's too specific for, for either of the Alexes to answer.
Well, thank you, Alex squared, for the presentation. Let's move on, a couple of questions here, so we've got Councilwoman Chin, and followed by Vice Mayor Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to both Alexes. I understand this is your first time presenting to council, you were great. Thank you. Good job balancing the other Alexes.
Thank you.
A couple of comments and ideas, and a point that Kim Gaffney Loza made, that you both reiterated the importance of education. One, that the preserve exists, and two, then how do we educate both residents and new visitors to engage appropriately within the preserve, right? We were, some of us, many of us, recently were in conversation with Tempe Tourism. I think that they would be a great partner, because they're looking for ways to tell Tempe's story, and I think this is a good, this could be a great partnership, where they're not just, their reach is not simply external visitors, but their reach is internal to our community also. And I think this would be a fun idea, that, and they are pretty creative. I'm looking at Chris Baxter, she works closely with Tempe Tourism. I think they would be interested in helping get the word out as people visit Tempe, hey, did you know we have a preserve? And the different educational models of the hieroglyphics, and just the desert to flora and fauna of the desert, and what it is, and what these cacti are. I would, I would encourage you to connect with them.
Thank you, yes. I think we have, there's a lot of future opportunities coming with Re:Re:Imagined, as well as with the development potentially of the John McCain Library, and the connection to the preserves, obviously being located not in the preserve, but surrounded by the preserve, couple that with Tempe Tourism. So yes, thank you so much for the, for the input.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garland?
I, I love this presentation, and thank you so much, Logan Simpson, and all the work that everybody has done on this. When I was reading the management plan, one thing popped out to me that I just, there's so much detail in there, and so much information, I just was so impressed with it. So thank you so much for all of that, for the open meetings that you had, attended one in North Tempe, and there were so many people there, and it was really, really well attended, you guys answered all the questions, so thank you so much for doing that. I love the stewardship program, the volunteer stewardship program, I think that's going in the right direction, is that the more people that you get involved into making it beautiful and sharing the information, and they can share it with other people, I think everybody buys in and they take ownership of it. So I think that's really wonderful, so thank you for doing that. The tribal input was so important to me as being a large part of where we are and what land we're standing on, and our land acknowledgement that was so important for all of us to do. So I think having the tribal input was really great. I'm completely supportive of removing the holiday signs on their important spiritual mountain, and so I am happy that that was part of the plan also. So one of the things I was going to say is, when we were, some people have been talking about signs, in the management plan, on its page 3-8, it talks about the drainage off of Hayden Butte. One of the things that I recognized when I was in a meeting at the transportation office, when we were in that conference room, the Don Cassano Room, and I'm looking up and watching people come down the side of the mountain where they're not supposed to be, what I understand from some people who hike up there, it's like, well, people will look at a drainage area, a wash, and claim that as a trail, is if it's possible at all that maybe some of those larger areas where we know people are walking down, when we start to do signs, it says something like, this is a wash, not a trail, stay on the trail, or something, because every time I'm in the Don Carlos Room, somebody's walking down the wrong side. So just a thought. But thank you so much, you guys have done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Councilwoman Brach?
Thank you to two Alexes. My, my suggestion is, you, I would like, maybe we can work with the high school students, and not just MIAC, because I always say, MIAC is not the, it's not the post-check on all the schools. We have, they have a, they have an actual club within all the high schools, it actually would be great to give you suggestions and questions to do, and also work with ASU, and bring them involved in it too, to help out with that also. Because I think that the more people, especially the ones who are coming into it, and the ones who are going to be bringing their families to start educating now, I think that would be the best thing. So I think that we need to encompass the high schools and the colleges in the, in our, in our viewpoint of what we're going to do next, especially when it comes to advertisement, communications, all of that, because they're going to give you the best ideals to how to work with the people. Because I guarantee you, maybe Mayor Woods, but I don't think we're out there on a bicycle and out there trying to do that. I think it's a generation below us that might be doing it. Mayor Woods, I don't know, I don't know what you do on the weekends, so.
I work.
Councilmember Brach, you hit the nail on the head, you're, you'll be happy to hear your high school students actually recommended the exact same thing, meeting with specific clubs, so you taught them well.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Councilwoman Brach. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you. I know Tempe Tourism will be interested in this, and I'm going to ask the CEO to make sure he puts this on our agenda for our board retreat. So thank you, Councilmember Chin, for bringing that up. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brandberg?
Mr. Mayor, Alex, you know, I know we've, I'll sit up here, you know, thanking you guys for all of the amount of work that you guys did, and it was phenomenal, because you even met with us individually and with groups to kind of go through the plan, because it's pages and pages, and there's so much minutia. But I also want to thank the Management Plan Committee, they're all volunteers, Kim Gaffney Loza was on there, and she actually invited me to one of the meetings, and it was very eye-opening to me, I mean, they literally went line by line through this report, and everybody that was in there was just very, very invested and emotional, you know, with everything that was going in here. So I, you know, I know people are going to read the end product, but I just really hope that people don't lose the fact that a lot of time, a lot of energy, blood, sweat, and tears went into this final product, so I want to thank everybody involved.
Thank you, it's very appreciated.
Excellent, thank you. The only one comment I had was regarding the, you know, the bike jumps, I was appreciative you talked about more public input and talking to folks in the bicycle community. And the one item regarding the holiday displays, the only sort of thought crossed my head about that is, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not supportive of removing those, but I want to make sure that we're talking about kind of where they might be in terms of an alternate location, because I know there are a lot of communities, our Christian community, our Muslim community, our Jewish community, they have definitely really enjoyed sort of doing that year after year, and actually, in sort of the, in sort of the increasingly challenging and sort of difficult world that we live in, many times, it actually gives a lot of folks a sort of a sense of unity in the city of Tempe, when they actually have an opportunity to see those holiday displays during the holiday season. So I just would love to see if we could find some way to talk about if we're not going to do them on the Butte at some point, kind of where they could go instead that might be more appropriate. I mean, I was an example even in my head thinking about, as we're continuing to work on the Hayden Flowerville development, maybe that's a place potentially where you could have some holiday displays, you know, city-owned property, so anyway, I mean, that's just sort of an idea, but just, just wanted to make sure I threw that in there, just for, since we're talking about it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Great, sounds good. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, item number five, call to the audience, the City Council welcomes public comment at this time for the committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Are there any speaker cards, Madam Clerk?
None, receipt.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone in the audience wanting to address the council, if so, get my attention. All right, seeing that I'll close item number five, let's move to item number six, committee of the whole. Item 6A, Proposed Council Subcommittee's, Pro City Council Rule 7, subsection 2B, any two members of the council may propose the formation of a subcommittee at a work-study session or the council by identifying the purpose of the proposed subcommittee and the proposed members of the subcommittee, and obtaining approval of the majority of the council. So there is- So there is a proposal this evening under item 6A1, drink spiking education and prevention. Councilman Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmember Garland and I would like to propose a subcommittee on drink spiking education and prevention. We want to look at various tactics to inform the public how to go out and enjoy Tempe's nightlife safely. We want to do trainings with people in the industry that may or may not know the prevalence of drink spiking, may not know what to look for, the signs and symptoms, and, and you know, kind of best practices, prevention techniques, and also look at ways that the city can, can be a partner to that industry and making sure that they have the tools that they need to deal with the drink spiking situation, should it arise. Only one in 10 drink spiking incidences are ever reported, and I'm sure we all know someone who's had their drink spiked at one point or another, and it's certainly something that I think the city could do some good around. So I think Vice Mayor Garland, I think I called their council member Garland earlier, but Vice Mayor Garland for her support on this, and you know, I'm looking forward to doing this work.
Sounds good, thank you, Councilman Keating and Vice Mayor Garland, appreciate it. Any councilmembers have any comments or questions, or is everybody okay with moving forward? Okay, sounds good, all right. So you have authorization to move forward with that item. Are there any other proposals for a new council subcommittee at this time? All right, seeing none, let's move on to item 6B, council subcommittee status updates as needed or recommendations for council direction. Let me go here in order. Item 6B1, heat safety for Tempe and contract workers, council subcommittee. Councilman Keating, any updates?
Yes, Mayor, we had our second committee meeting. We have a draft ordinance that is going to go to the public for feedback, and you know, I'm very proud of it. Keating has done a tremendous job, working with stakeholders, working with staff, to come back with something that is quite robust. In fact, he had a slide during our last subcommittee meeting that just shows like how far, you know, Tempe goes beyond what some of our partner cities have done, you know, to protect our workers, not only the city, but our contract workers as well. So I'm very pleased with how it's gone thus far, and councilmembers Amber and Hodge have been very helpful in crafting this ordinance, and I'm looking forward to bringing it back to the entire body after public comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Sounds good, thank you. Next up, 6B2, increased advocacy for Tempe youth with disabilities, council subcommittee. Councilman Hodge, any updates?
Well, we have, actually, we have our meeting tomorrow, Friday the 25th at 1:00 PM in the Tempe City Hall.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Next up, item 6B3, nuisance ordinance, council subcommittee. Vice Mayor Garland?
No updates, this will be second read on May 1st.
All right, thank you so much. And last, but certainly not least, item 6B4, revitalization of Tempe Town Lake, council subcommittee. Councilmember Amber?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we actually had our second meeting this month as well, and during that meeting, we had city staff come in and do updates on their RFP and RFQs that they're going to be issuing pretty soon, and we also had some insights into the constructability of the areas surrounding the lake, especially with the, on the north shore, you'd be surprised, because I certainly was, what's actually underneath that dirt? Want to special thank you to Community Services Director Craig Hayton, City Engineer Mark Weber, and Principal Engineer Greg Kent for joining us. It was a fantastic meeting, and I learned a lot. So we are going to await the outcome of the RFP and the RFQ, so we probably aren't going to meet again until early fall.
Sounds good, excellent, thank you. All right, next up, item number seven, future agenda items. Members of the City Council may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session, but in accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Would any councilmembers like to add an agenda item to a future issue review session? Councilman Hodge?
Well, I think I've already asked for this, but I'm asking for it again because it's very important for us to do the Demarcro First Report, due to the fact that schools are looking to, right now, we have Kyrene in the midst of going through a process to check out if they can actually keep all their schools open. And for us, I think it's important that we hear this Demarcro First Report, because we need to actually know what the schools are facing and on their side of the view when we start looking at developments and stuff and what we're going into in our city. So that's why I asked, can we kind of bring this closer, not, you know, don't, because I know I asked a few weeks, I asked about a couple of months ago, but I really would like to see this on the agenda sooner rather than later, with everything's happening right now.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilman Hodge. Madam City Manager?
I believe our clerk is trying to share the date that we already have.
Yes, it's scheduled for June 12th.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. All right, any other future agenda items for any other members of council? All right, seeing that I'll close that discussion and move to item number eight, adjournment. The next scheduled work-study session will be on May 8th, 2025. We are adjourned at 5:19 PM. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.